From the Florida Credit Union. Florida Credit Union has been our partner since the Partners in Education Program started in 1988. They are constantly looking for ways to support our students, teachers, and staff. And as you know, they even have a working branch of Florida Credit Union inside Beaufort High School. This year, Letcher County Public Schools will be hosting two empowerment summits. Our save the date is up on the screen. One for teachers on August 7th at the Exactech Arena at the O'Connell Center, and then at the other on August 8th at Trinity United Methodist Church for Parents and Families. Both will feature keynote speakers. Dr. Dre Graham, the Florida 2020 Teacher of the Year, will speak at the O'Connell Center. And for the family summit, Dr. Anne Brown from the Cook Center for Human Connection will be our speaker. And there's a large committee from ACPS working on the empowerment summit, which I'm sure you guys have heard a little bit about. But when we started working on the empowerment summit and who to ask to sponsor, Florida Credit Union was our first thought, to be considered and included. They like to be considered and included whenever we have these kinds of needs. And so now I'll turn the podium over to Beatrice for her important presentation.
Good evening, everybody. It's not a very important presentation. It's just to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to help the schools again. And we are always honored to say yes when we are able to. So hopefully, this first empowerment summit is a success, and we're very, very happy to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could ask board members to come toward the center a little bit, we can take a picture.
That would be awesome because she has a check for $25,000 to help us cover our expenses.
Thank you. Thank you much, very much, Beatrice and Kelly. We really, really appreciate this good news. Thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to move to adopt it?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Ms. Surtin. Second by Mrs. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, the approval of the regular school board meeting minutes from June 7th. Do I have a motion to accept?
A move. Second.
Motion by Dr. McNeely, seconded by Ms. Surtin. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Board member superintendent announcements. Do I have any? Starting with Superintendent Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt. I would just like to say it's official. The Florida School Board Association executive officers were elected at the School Board Association meeting. That's their annual meeting. And Vice Chair Surtin is president-elect. That was official as elected by ballot of a majority of the membership in attendance at the annual meeting. So I'd like to just say congratulations. I know we've mentioned it before, but it's official. And so we're just honored that we have a board member that's on the executive team with the Florida School Board Association. Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations. And is there anyone else, Ms. Surtin?
Thank you. And thank you Superintendent Andrew. I just really want to mention on Friday last week, this past Friday, I attended, as well as Ms. Russell and Dr. McNeely, the Juneteenth Celebration Breakfast at the Cotton Club. And I want to take this time to personally give kudos to Ms. Angie and the children that we didn't have a speaker this year at the breakfast. The children performed. We had spoken word. They sang, they danced. But to me, the show stopper were the children on the violins with the strings that played along with Ms. Angie. And they also performed again on Saturday at the event that the City of Gaines was sponsored at Bo Diddley. But the children on the strings, I think, were remarkable. They had performed previously at the Historical Marker Ceremony down at Martin Luther King about two months ago, but on Friday, they were stellar. And I just want to commend Ms. Angie Terrell for the work that she does with the students in the arts countywide. I mean, it's just such a reflection on her, as well as the hard work that the children put in, and they represented the county very well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll move ahead for citizen input. I do not, as of now, have any forms for speakers at this time, but we do have one phone caller. So let's go to the phones if we could. This will be three minutes. And if the caller would please state their name, and you have three minutes with the board.
Caller, please state your name, and you have three minutes with the board.
Tina Daye. I was watching the workshop that was held last week. Mind you, it was during the day, and I did have to work. So I had to watch the replay while my kids go to bed, so I don't be interrupted. But the comment was made that when it was time for the citizen comment, I don't know whether it was a comment or it was a joke that fell flat to me, that this is why we need to have the phone lines introduced again. And I'm just saying, you probably won't have no citizen input because the workshop is held during the day when most of us are working. But that does not mean that the caller should be removed. And like I said, I don't know whether it was a joke that fell flat, but I felt like it was disrespectful because especially for people that call in, like I do, I don't have time to call in on the workshop held during the day where I'm working to provide for my family. But I'm calling in now. And so I took that as offense to me personally, because I do call in. That's not a reason for you to tell that. Like I said, I don't know whether it was a joke or it was a sarcastic comment, but either way, I was offended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was that it? Thank you. And yeah, I think, and just for the public's knowledge, we had voted a couple of, two or three meetings ago, to bring the public calls back. So that's not an issue. Hasn't been an issue. That's in case somebody was not sure about that. Okay, again, I have no other forms at this time, so we're going to move ahead to the consent agenda and go to Superintendent Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt. The superintendent recommends that the school board approve the consent agenda as described in Items Two through 15.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Dr. McNeely, seconded by Ms. Surtin. Do I have any discussion?
I have one comment if I could, Mr. Shel-.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shelnut, I saw his name on the FISBIT Policy Renewal, and I noticed that the workers' comp claims were like two, over 200 for the trending years that they showed in there. And I was wondering, or just going to suggest possibly, that we look into seeing which areas we have the most workers' comp claims, and maybe we see if there are some mitigation strategies that we could do, because it doesn't seem like it's getting under 200 claims a year. I think it was a five-year. I didn't tab it there, but five years were presented for the comparison with the number of claims and the dollar amounts that we spent on there. But that's by no means the reason why the premium is high. The only reason, I just thought that was just interesting to see that the workers' comp claims have been at that 200 claims per year for about five years, so. Yeah, five years, thank you. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Surtin. Any further comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving to action item number one, Mr. Shelnut.
Good evening, Chair Hyatt, members of the board, and Superintendent Andrew. Employee Case 2021-22-0121-37. Superintendent recommends that the employee be terminated effective June 22nd, 2022.
Do I have a motion for that? Motion by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Surtin. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Mr. Green.
Chairman Hyatt, board members, Superintendent Andrew, I bring before you the third renewal charter contract for McEnopee Academy. McEnopee Academy is located at 708 Northwest Okahumpke, McEnopee, Florida, 32667. Is a charter school serving students in grades six through 12, and has operated continuously since the 2002-2003 school year. The school's charter contract, 2017 through 2022, expires June 30th, 2022. The proposed second renewal charter contract sets forth the terms and conditions for operation of the school, and it follows the state template. It has a term of five years from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2027. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the second renewal charter contract with McEnopee Academy as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Ms. Surtin, seconded by Ms. Russell. Any discussion?
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Green, it wasn't in this packet, and I was trying to recall. Have we had, has McEnopee had any issues, financial issues with viability?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I know there's a chart that-
Mr. Russell, but not in the renewal.
Not to my knowledge. There's been no financial issues with McEnopee.
Okay, I was trying to recall. I thought we had gotten a, in one of the year-end audit reports, that there was one that had some challenges, you know, because of declining enrollment. But I've thrown away a whole lot of stuff, so I couldn't go back and-
I'm right there with you. It's really hard to keep track. I know we have had a couple charter schools with deteriorating financial conditions. I don't think McEnopee is one of those.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Surtin. Since I've been handling this, it was not McEnopee. I think I know the charter school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Surtin. Are there any more questions or comments?
I do have the principal and her AP here, if you have any questions.
Okay.
I don't want to put them on the spot, but I do want to recognize that they were here.
Okay. So, okay, now the principal's here with some really tough questions. So, just kidding. So, any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, continuing with Mr. Green.
Yes, sir. The second, I bring to you now the Second Amendment of the First Renewal for Bowware Springs Charter School. The original charter contract for Bowware Springs was entered into November 6th, 2012, and was subsequently renewed on May 15th, 2018. The charter was amended on October 15th, 2019, as a result of their meeting high-performing charter status to elect to extend the term of their contract from five to 15 years and invoke the provisions of that section that reduce administrative fee charged by the district from 5% to 2%. At this time, the Bowware Springs Charter School and its governing body wish to provide an additional benefit, namely, a retirement benefit to their employees. Therefore, Bowware Charter Springs, Bowware Springs, my apology, Bowware Springs Charter School and its governing board are requesting a Second Amendment to change the status that of a private employer to a public employer for the purpose of participating in the Florida retirement system as covered on the group section 121.021.
Okay.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Second Amendment as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to move forward? And a motion by Ms. Surtin, seconded by Mrs. Russell. Any discussion? Certainly, Dr. Paulson.
Now, what are you doing by me? They become public because they can be in the state retirement system, right? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
What, does this make any difference in their association with us?
No, sir. Just, most of the contracts that we have with charter schools, they are listed as a public employer, for whatever reason. In this contract, they were listed as a private employer. The new principal there just noticed that and was recommending that change, but I would also defer to Attorney Attorney for-
That's never come up before, that's why.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Green. Ms. Turney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Andrew. Action item number four is amendments to the Elementary and Secondary Codes of Student Conduct and Policy 5500, Student Conduct. This is the second reading. The first reading was on May 17th, 2022, and there was a public hearing on June 7th, 2022, to discuss, consider, and receive input on the proposed amendments to the two different codes of conduct and to Policy 5500. There have been no changes made since that public hearing. So at this time, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the proposed amendments to Board Policy 5500, Student Conduct, and the amendments to the Elementary Code of Student Conduct and the Secondary Code of Student Conduct for the 22-23 school year as presented.
Do I have a motion for-
I'm willing to make the motion, but do we need to vote on them separate? Mr. Delaney, I think when we proceeded with them previously, we did them separately, the elementary, and then we did the secondary one, I think, so do-
Okay, I think that's, I think that's very appropriate. So, Ms. Surtin, would you like to separate the motion, and then we'll go from there?
Move that we adopt the amendments to the Elementary Student Code of Conduct as presented by Attorney Attorney.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by-
So what do you do with a second? Are you gonna make another number?
Well, I guess we could do that, if that's important.
Well, we gotta do it, I mean, right?
I'll ask Mr. Delaney after we do this.
I just wonder how you're gonna, is it gonna be 4A and 4B? I don't know. Whatever, it's nothing big, but I think it needs to happen. If you're gonna separate.
Would that, Mr. Delaney would just say 4A and 4B, would that be fine?
I think so, as long as Ms. Green is able to note that in the minutes, and when we record how the vote went, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Paulson, for pointing that out, because we certainly want it clear in the records. And so, the motion was made by Ms. Surtin, seconded by Mrs. Russell. Do, is there any discussion about the amendments to the Elementary Code of Student Conduct? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next will be 4B. And do I have a motion regarding the secondary codes?
Move that we adopt the amendments to the Code of Student Conduct for the secondary as presented by, for Policy 5500, for the changes as presented by Attorney Attorney.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Surtin, seconded by Ms. Russell. Any discussion on 4B, which would be the secondary code of student conduct? Yes?
If I may, just to be clear, I think Ms. Surtin did clarify, but this 4B is the secondary code of conduct plus Policy 5500.
Okay, thank you. Plus, plus Policy 5500. So, Ms. Surtin, can we comfortably add that to your motion? Oh, you already did? Okay, I'm sorry. I must not have heard that. Thank you. And, okay, very good. And I just, before we vote, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Turney and her office for doing this, doing all the legwork on this and getting us to this point. It's a lot of stuff. And it's a lot, you know, every, every year with changes, you know, we have to do it, plus some things we just need to do. But a lot of this, we don't have a choice. And I certainly appreciate your hard work and the hard work of your staff.
Thank you. I do want to throw that back out to the team, though. There was a big team involvement on this from Student Services and Discipline Committee and everybody that ran it through that process.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. And, okay, Ms. Turney, action item five.
Yes, sir. Action item number five is amendments to the Student Progression Plan and Policy 5410, Student Progression. This is the second reading. The first reading was on May 17th, 2022. There was a public hearing on June 7th, 2022, to discuss, consider, and receive input on the proposed amendments to the Student Progression Plan and Policy 5410. No changes have been made since the public hearing, and at this time, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the proposed amendments to Board Policy 5410, Student Progression, and the amendments to the Student Progression Plan for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion for that?
Go move.
Add a second? Motion by Ms. Surtin, seconded by Mrs. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Turney. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt, board members, Superintendent Andrew. I have before you the final math textbook title for your consideration this evening. This will be the text for our Math for College Liberal Arts. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the adoption and purchase of this additional title to complete our instructional materials for K-12 Math as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion in favor?
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Add a second? Motion by Ms. Surtin, seconded by Mrs. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, moving to citizen input, this is, each citizen will have three minutes to address the board. I only have one form filled out, and subsequent to that, we'll check. There may be a caller by then, but if someone is listening and wants to call in, now would be a good time to get onto the queue. Okay, Dr. Keterba.
Good evening. My name is Ann Keterba. Good evening, Chair Hyatt, board members, Superintendent Andrew. I don't have any statement today, but I do have a lot of questions. And so I'm gonna sort of, I've just been sitting around this summer, wondering about certain things, topics, so I just thought I'd ask questions. And I know you can't answer them, but I'm just gonna ask them. And they sort of fall into a few categories. One is the facilities, you know, referendum. I know that, you know, it was advertised, there was a lot of conversation about the schedule of the facilities improvements. Some of them have been completed, some of them haven't. And I just wondered, with inflation the way it is, with building costs going up so much, with a possible recession coming, who knows what's gonna happen? But I wondered if there was an update possible on where we are in the facilities list? Have things been changed? Are we on budget? Are we above budget, below budget, whatever? Just a question. Does the list need to be prioritized? That was our first best thought, but does it need to be reprioritized? I was thinking about the one mil, and I know that I did look at the last report, and I see that the counselor category, there's a lot more money budgeted for it- see that the counselor category, there's a lot more money budgeted for it, but I wondered if there are actually more counselors hired at the schools, because I know it's hard to find counselors, or if money from the general fund was moved over, you know? What is our net change in counselors? Because we know mental health is a huge issue in our schools right now. So that was a question I had. The equity plan is, and I am gonna run out of time, but the equity plan, even though it hasn't been talked about much, my get, and I'm not that married to it, but I think it's still in effect, and there were goals. And one of them I wanted to know about was the lottery program for magna programs. How did it work? Were the right kids getting in? What's the retention rate, et cetera? And is it still happening? Gifted ID, you know, universal gifted identification program for second graders? What is the status of that? Are there, if you're identifying more children, who are they? They in the west or the east, and how are they being accommodated? And also discipline, the urge to, or the, I guess, what do you call it? The reduction in out-of-school suspensions, how has that worked out for us? Yes, suspensions were reduced. Were they replaced with anything, et cetera? And how, was it a net gain, a net negative? What happened with that? And then finally, and I will run out of time, the ESAR money, how are the programs going that we are funding? Is there an update on Beyond the Bell, UFLI, and-
Okay, we do have three minutes, and I-
Yep, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Nope, nobody uses three minutes better than Ann Keterba, because that was very, 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 a lot of questions, and I think these are good questions. And Ms. Green, if you were able to, were you able to get all those down?
Yes, sir.
That's more than I could do. I started writing, but I, so if, I'm sure between the superintendent and the deputy superintendent and other folks, we can look at some of that. I know on my desk at home, not that you can find a lot of things on that, but I do have the original schedule for the, for building that's, that's there, and so that, that's on my mind, and so I think these are things that would be good for us to look into. So, thank you. And do we have any, okay, thank you. So, at this point, we are at, board members, superintendent requests, and I'm gonna start with Dr. Paulson. Did you not have it? Or-
I just turned mine over.
Oh, I thought you had yours already, Mr. Paulson. Okay, Ms. Surtin.
Thank you. Dr. Keterba had some of the same questions I had. I was gonna ask that in an upcoming workshop, Mr. Andrew, if we could have staff, you and I've spoken about this, if I could get the attendance by school and grade level, the absenteeism, I think it's a little bit harder for middle and high school, but I would like to see it by elementary schools, since I've seen that at the SI schools. I'd also want to see, to get an update on the Beyond the Bell tutoring, who used it? If we thought it was effective, if we'll continue it in the future? And also by school, you know, that data disaggregated, because I'm wondering also if the students who really needed the additional support, if they were actually getting online and taking advantage of that tutoring opportunity after school? And then the high-dose tutoring that we implemented this school year, I'm not sure. I hadn't heard anything about that in any of the SI schools when I made those visits there. So, Ms. Wise, I'm not sure if you can give us an update, the board an update on that, on that. So, and any of the other programs that we were spending our ESAR funds on, if we could just see their effectiveness and what we could plan to continue on into the new school year, or any adjustments, or things of that nature? Also, an update, if we have some data on UFLI. I saw Dr. Lane briefly, and she said data was positive-looking, but I'm not sure what you guys have gotten as a team that you could possibly share with the board. She didn't have anything concrete to share with us, but if we could get something like that in a future workshop, that would be most helpful. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. I'm glad that you stated what you said, Mr. Hyatt, to Dr. Keterba. I had had conversation with the superintendent. The only thing I missed, well, I don't know, because I said last meeting about the painting of this building, but as far as the renovations in our schools, I did not bring that up, but all of the other items that she shared this afternoon, I certainly have brought up. I certainly do expect to get some clear answers, and since Ms. Surtin requested information, definitely from the elementary schools, especially SI, but I'd like to add that same request for middle. Also, I have requested, and I'm sure that the scores are coming in this week, I'm hoping. I have not heard, but we are really at the end of our time before we have to make some strong decisions about personnel. So, I'm wanting to know from curriculum folk, the wonderful curriculum folk that we have, what's happening and what will be different next for the 2022-23 school year for our lowest quartile of children? And I'm not speaking of kids who attend school on this side of town. I'm talking about every single school in our district. I do want that information. I also want some information more from personnel. Mr. Shelnut, I see you looking at me. How many teachers of color have you added this year? And do we have, still have schools? Like, I'm not gonna call a school, I've already said it to Mr. Andrew, that we don't have one teacher of color in that school, and I think that's horrible. And we, I think we have two schools in that same situation. But I'm hoping that between our workshop tomorrow, that I just got reminded of at 1:00, where Mr. Rello, you will be speaking in terms of ESAR, will you not, and other budgetary things? So we will be flooding you with many questions, so be ready. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Dr. Paulson?
Yeah, I just got a question. We had an approved equity plan. I haven't seen anything in about a year or so. Interesting if we can look at that. Unless there's something that's come across the board, people here the last year, year and a half, I haven't seen anything. So, we have an equity plan, and I handed it in when people look at it. The other thing is, about three years ago, our teacher plan, one of the issues was the teachers are of color. You remember that? I think we should have that again. We should have had it the last couple of years, and we could have looked at that, but I think it'd be a good thing to have again, on it every year. But we, since then, I haven't seen anything. So, those are two things you just reminded me of by saying that. And, okay?
Any, anybody else? I think we're all clear. Do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We're, this could be a new record for time, I don't know. I think, I think, but I, it is, we do have a very important workshop coming up tomorrow at 1:00, and I certainly, going into that, I want to say that I so appreciate, and I know everybody on the board does, the hard work of the folks at the district and who are, make the workshops available for us, and I hope everybody gets maybe a really nice week off around the 4th of July, and we'll be ready to hit the ground running. But thank you to all of our leadership and hard workers here at the district. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.